First up on the agenda is approval of the July 11th and July 22nd, 2024 minutes. Please approve.
Second.
Both? Both public?
Yes.
I've got a motion and a second to approve both sets of minutes. Do I have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we've got public comment. I'm guessing there's probably nobody signed up. So next, after the public comment, we've got student transfers.
Yes, it's on page five. And, uh, we're with page five and six. The first transfer, I recommend to deny. Parent was notified. I do not see the parent present. And I recommend denying the transfer on page five from Van Bier to Alma.
I move to deny.
Second.
So I've got a motion and a second to deny this request. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Page six, page six. The other transfer from Van Bier to Alma, a parent is not present, and I recommend denying the transfer.
Move to deny.
Second.
So I've got a motion and a second to deny the second transfer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, consent agenda.
I have nothing to pull out.
Move to present consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, superintendent's report.
All right, we'll start with Dr. Wood.
Great. Our written report's long, but I'm not going to go over all those things that are in there. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. On page 21, I was talking about Airdale Academy. We welcomed 55 new Airdales to our team last Thursday and Friday. It was a great couple of days. It's just all the things it means to be a team Airdale, our original mission. We talked to them a lot about the resources here, who does what, putting the name and the face together, who can help them when they need support. And so it was a great couple of days. The other thing on page 20, I just kind of outlines like the kind of the big TDs that each school went to. But I wanted to mention the first one about high school. We've talked for several years about being more involved with the Accuplacer. The Accuplacer is just another option besides the ACT. It still kind of tests the same things, but just in a little bit different manner. And it just gives some students a better opportunity where they can qualify to take concurrent classes, AP classes. And now it's going to be involved with some of the workforce pathways that they're changing up. So we just wanted to know a little bit, and we were kind of dabbling with it last year. But we wanted to know a little bit more about what it does, how to help kids do better on it, and kind of train a team so we could offer that more often to students. And then I set aside some money that I can use for tutoring to do some after-school sessions with the Accuplacer, just like we do for ACT prep, just to give kids another opportunity. And then it's not a lot to take the test, maybe five or $10. But I put some money in an account where we can pay for kids to take it so they don't have to pay the fees to take the test. Mr. Kirkland, you want to add anything to that?
No, it was a good, it was a good call, Chris. Accuplacer is, is like Dr. Wood said, it's just, it's being used a lot. The thing that benefits us the most right now is our kids that may not have achieved right what they needed to, on the ACT, to be in a concurrent class, which is through Arkansas Tech. They can sit down in 30 or 45 minutes without having to go to a testing site. We are the testing site. And get that Accuplacer, get the score in, except for Arkansas Tech. So it's a win for us.
Fantastic.
Mr. Biggs.
I apologize, I did not get my report in cheap. August 8th kind of snuck up on me, so I apologize for that. But I will discuss a little bit of the summer. The, something I want to brag about first. Dr. Wood did an outstanding job with the new teachers last week. It's amazing what they go through to learn what Alma, Alma has to offer. There are so many young and some wisdom age in that group. And it's real, you're a wisdom. But it's a great, it'll be able to understand what Alma is and get ready for that. She does a great job of that. We've helped from a lot of people, obviously, but a great job of that. Today, we met with a pre-K. Pre-K something to get to. Playground, playground and all the rules and regulations for playground. So we got that order to playground, pre-K should be here about September 18th. We've got a fence, we've got to follow a lot of rules and regulations. So she handled most of it and I got in on it, on the faculty or the facility side of it. And we got, got all that situated, so September 18th, it should be here. The other good thing about that is, is the guy that came actually installed the playground equipment that's currently there. So now we got a straightened guy to get that stuff fixed whenever it's there. So we found a happy stand, so it's moving.
Where will it be?
Excuse me?
Where will it be?
If you walk, if you're right behind the school, there's four pine trees right in the middle of the playground. It's going to be on the west side of that. And it has to be a certain, it's going to be 35 by 85. So it's got to be fenced in. And to say the truth, it's funny, but only pre-K can use it. I mean, you know, kindergarten, why can't we use it? Why can't we do this? It has all kinds of rules. You've got to have the mulch so deep, you've got to have this, you've got to have that. So they've been fighting it forever for this, for the last nine months. Will say Mr. Bullard and Ms. Thomas have done an outstanding job getting this ready because it's, and Dr. Wood's been leading it. But it's been a good, interesting thing, but it's going to be here. And we're, the first person that we called, they were going to be, get all the playground equipment in in February. So now we found some other people to get this here, so it's going to be like, I think September 18th, somewhere September. So.
And there's some small pieces out there they can start with?
Yes.
Pre-exam time for that. Mike, everything's, everything did a great job this summer. All the schools are ready. We've, we've got some changes a little bit in the intermediate school. We moved, John just actually asked about it, moved crosswalk down, trying to help the flow. They got some great plans, we hope. We hope that works at intermediate school. We got a plan, they, or they got a plan. Myself and Ms. Lyon have worked hard to figure out that plan. It looks like it's going to work. It looks like the flow's there. But we all know how the first week is, so we can't really base it on what's going to happen that first two or three days. But we believe, they believe it's going to work.
Do you have somebody out there to yell at them like Ramona? I mean, that's the key.
Ms. Lyon, she's going to be there.
Seriously. She gets yelled at me still.
Listen, I pulled 875 kids through a pickup line on a two-lane street last year when, when we had two schools in one. So we can, we can make it happen.
What I mentioned to Mr. Biggs for the meeting was, you know, we talked about the cost to extend that on, basically all the way down to the track entrance. But if the crosswalk where it is now, if that, if that, this plan, this plan worked, we wouldn't have to extend it as far.
And the fact that traditionally, parents haven't been walking up, and now they have the option, just like at the primary, to walk up to pick up their kids. Some parents like to have that option. Like, they like to be, you know, in line, in person, and then walk across the crosswalk, get in their cars, and, and be able to drive away from the parking lot. And that gives us a little bit of, a little bit of padding to get the, the line through faster.
It'll probably take a couple of weeks before we have good data on it, but.
Yeah, please don't judge us like we're starting to school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're at the right time. They're thinking, really, everything it looks like is going to work very well, so we, we hope it does. And just trade the parents, I mean, you know what that is, and that's just the way it is. It'll happen well. Very excited about the, the new activity center. I know Mr. Kirkland sent today, I think, went through it with his staff, everybody's so excited about it. We, Dr. Duffy, Dr. Wood and I took the Alma group, used to be the Rotary Club through it yesterday. We are having the open house on Friday, August 16th at 7:30. The reason why we chose that night, kind of what Chafin said last week, two weeks ago, whatever, is that we didn't want to just have it just for this. We wanted to make it a big deal. So we actually, we're doing it, meet the Airdale night. It's 6:30 to 7:30. It's when everybody that plays football from 7th grade up to 12th grade is there. Cheerleaders, the dance team, everybody gets introduced that night, everybody gets to hear their name. So we're having it from right after that. So we put it on social media to make sure the agricultural people that, that won't be there at that time is knowing that it's open for visitation. So we're going to just let them walk through, about an hour, let everybody see it, and see how proud we are of it. But it's, it's, it's turned out well. We had a couple of little glitches. I should be able to sign off tomorrow. We have one little electrical deal left. That one bay that just wasn't working. So they're supposed to be here 9:30 tomorrow. So that should be it. And we ought to be able to sign, sign that. Other great news, we thought it was going to be something terrible, the column that Dr. Duffy sent you all at the state. Got that fixed. It's already fixed, and it's more structurally sound than it was. And so we're very excited that it was so quick to get it. Holmes came and did it a lot quicker than, they understood how important that was to get that fixed. So they rushed that. So we're very happy that's fixed. Last thing that I have is, I think Barry's the only one, but Miranda was out front. Earlier, I talked to Chafin about this last week, two weeks ago. Brought up the visitor management system one time in here. We got a demonstration out here at the Raptor system. I demonstrated it to Barry, and I put my license in. The first time you put your license in, Miranda pushes a button, secretary pushes a button, it comes out. If you have any red flags, felonies, anything that's over there to pop up. If there is a felony or anything, it would, it would email, or excuse me, text whoever we wanted to text, SROs, principals. But the first time you put your license in there, it comes out. I got a name tag that comes out, that shows your, your face, your visitor face. And it shows where you're supposed to go. So you put it on there, that takes about two minutes. The next time you come in, you say, hey, I'm Travis Biggs. She types it in there, 15 seconds, that comes out. So the first time, you got to have your card. After that, you do not have to have a license, you just come in, say your name. So it's really very quick, but it's very safe and secure. I asked Ms. Lyon if she, if y'all had any questions, she had it at her last school. And we had it at Southside, I went back in the day, and Mr. Kirkland, I was saying, wait, if I have any questions about how it works, Ms. Lyon can explain a little bit more to you.
I'm happy to help. I can tell you that it does make checking in visitors a lot quicker, and people don't have to worry about having their IDs anymore, because they did it the very first time. Sometimes we do like an intake of, we let everybody know, hey, we're going to start, we're moving towards this system. You're welcome to come by school at any time. We can go ahead and scan your ID, and then it probably, it's like, makes the process a lot faster for the rest of the year. One other thing is that teachers really liked the, the badge, you know, like having the na, having the face and their name already, so that they knew what their name was, not just a generic badge. It's like it had that person's identifying information on it, so they knew who they were. And like I said, it was just really, really, really fast, so.
It also shows where you're supposed to be going. So if they're in the wrong spot, then why are you over here?
Yeah.
It's a, it's just a safe and security. I mean, it really is, and it really doesn't take that long. Go back to it, it was free, because we had to go through that phase one of the safe and security. Dr. Duffy's saying that we hope that we get to phase two, phase three. That's all the State Department, that they give it to us. But again, it's free, so we had to buy that. You got to go through all these phase one stuff to get to phase two, if we ever get to phase two. Just to give example of phase two, I actually had construction, Ware Construction come over. And with Ms. Lyon, myself and myself, to look at a secure vestal. So we started at the intermediate school because we had that opening that really is a perfect wall. He, I didn't, or that, they got back to me, it was, when I say only, I know what I'm saying here, but only $42,000 to do that building. Oh, that is, it's another wall of doors, and it really, secure vestal, I mean, just exactly what it is. The other buildings, high school would be really hard, but the other buildings would be halfway easier. But that's, that's on phase two, phase three, if we get to that. When I go back, I had to buy the, we had to purchase the Raptor through the first grant, because if we didn't, we couldn't do the phase two or three. If they, if you don't do all the phases in one, then you don't get to go to the next phase. So we really, we really think the Raptor is the way to go, it's a secure.
What's the criteria, though? When we talked about this, more about the chilling effect about the parents with felonies. I mean, you got a felony, can't come in the building?
No, that's up to the, it might be escorted. You just know that a felon's in the building.
I'm still opposed to that, I think that's terrible.
That a felon can be in the building or not?
Yeah. I'm promising you, you've got a lot of parents that are felons that are not a threat to anybody.
Well, at least we know they're in the building. Right?
I think it's going to have a chilling effect. I'm not largely in favor of just the blanket felons.
Well, it says what it is on there. Now, we might, we can program whatever it is.
It prints felon on the name tag?
No.
No, 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 no. It just red flags, a text message from a principal says, hey, come up and meet this person.
Do you set the criteria, what felonies, make it, email you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let's say that someone's a sex offender when they come on campus.
Depends on the level.
It does, it does.
And it depends on what the charge is.
But it's just how they're in the population.
Program what we want and what we don't. Now, they, any felon would go to Ms. Lyon or Kirkland, whoever, and then they can come up and decide. We can decide what level we let in and not.
So what, what committee's going to decide that objective criteria? Because I think this has a chilling effect on parents coming to be involved with their students. I mean, if they got a felony 10 years ago when they were, you know, 18, and then we're going to flag them and make it embarrass them, might want to come?
Nobody, nobody, nobody knows other than those three or four people that we have that texted. I mean, that'd be the only ones. And I had this one time at, at Southside, I went up and talked to them, I said, hey, come in my office a minute, and talk to them. And then we decided how we're going to do this, you know? And, and so nobody else knew other than me and the secretary up front, I guess. So it's not a embarrassment type deal, it's, my line is, secure our building better.
Well, not, not all felons are a threat.
True. I personally would always like to know when a felon's in my building, though. I mean, regardless.
Really?
I would.
If they were a felon 10 years ago, some 19-year-old stole a car?
100%. I would always want a felon to know when a felon's in my building.
If they've served their death society, you're not going to turn a page and let them move on?
I didn't say I couldn't let them in. But what I would say is, I, she's in charge of 700 kids in that building. But I got to, I want to know who's in my building. That's my opinion.
I think he's, what's the plan, or is there?
That's, that is it. That's, that would be a leadership, I think, decision of coming together as leaders and deciding how we're going to manage the visitors. And, and having the conversations like you did, like you, we were just talking about, about who, how do we decide who gets to come in? How do we decide when we pull someone in? Just knowing the information, are we just going to be at, hey, we know this person's on campus? For me, the greatest benefit is just that, from then on, we're not having to hound people for their IDs every single time they come into our building. Because, you know, right now, you, you, to check out a student, you have to have your name tag or your ID. And, and that would eliminate that. Because we would just click on who it is, and we can keep a track record of who checks out certain children. You know, so we'll know.
Is this at all schools, or y'all doing it?
We haven't yet, we don't have it. So I will tell you that I've been at lots of high schools, a lot of, this is not a new thing, lots of schools have it.
We've had it.
No, the, the Raptor system, it's pretty common.
But, but the fel, yeah, what are, I mean, are there other schools, like, getting people who may bring up for a felony?
I will tell you, I've, I've never experienced that as an administrator in the, in the last three years. It was, it, we, I never, I guess, never had anybody come into my building that, that it pinged on, because my district had it set at a certain level. And so none of, nobody ever came through as a SRO.
So that's the question. So I want to know what objective criteria are we going to do? I don't want it on a case-by-case basis. I want an objective criteria.
Yeah.
Sure. And I would like to know what they were.
We can set, we have to decide what we set that to.
Yeah, we can, yeah, because we haven't installed this anywhere yet.
And again, if, if somebody has a felon 10 years ago, and let's just say they come in and Mr. Kirkland meets with them, and talks it all the way through, he knows this was 10 years ago, this happened, and, and talks why and what and all that. Well, then we know that that person's safe in the building, I guess, you know, so.
What information does it provide you?
Whatever you set the criteria to be.
No, 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 what, what information does the system provide you about their, about their felony?
About their history?
Yeah.
Or they say title one, or, or two sex offender, three sex offender.
There's no way to verify, I guess what I'm asking is, what they tell Mr. Kirkland all is.
Oh, if it's after.
Yeah.
So where does Raptor pull its data? Is it ACIC connected, or is it connected to?
Yes. It goes straight to the same system, more or less, that we do our fingerprints and all that. And that's not the exact same system, but that's where it's. So it.
No, I'm looking for an actual name.
I can give that, but I can't get you that.
Find out.
Yes.
Which one?
Maybe probably warrants further discussion.
I think the secure vestibule is, it's really called a Sallyboard, right? A lot of schools end up prison.
Well.
Okay.
Security and safety is the most important thing our kids cannot learn without being secure. I mean, that's just the truth.
Okay.
That's all I got.
So where do we stand on it? Like, what's your rollout timeline for, what were you expecting for all the buildings? For the, they're in the boxes, ready to deliver to the buildings right now?
What's our deadline to have them installed? To qualify for phase two?
Well, we don't for sure know that phase two is going to be offered, because the State Department.
State appropriation.
Well, good, then I'd leave not installed until we know it's going to appropriate.
For security. You know, we expect an appropriation to happen, but we just don't know at some point, so.
Can you, can you use the system as a check-in and tracking tool without using criminal background as?
Yeah, visitor management system can be anything, anything we set the criteria to be. If we say John Ware comes in and does it, we give him a badge, he can stop at that. I mean, it, it shows the badge that person.
No tags at all?
There's nothing. I mean, you can say, I just want to use it as a ID maker.
Check-in, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's do that.
What you're doing anyway, you're logging who's coming in, who's going out. While they show you an ID, they get a visitor badge. So there's nothing new as far as logging?
No, you're just wearing a badge now. Like you said, it's another generic badge, it's actually your face on there, and it says you're supposed to go to Mr. Dernigan's room or whatever, and shows what it's at. So that's visitor management at the lowest level, I guess.
Yeah, which you're, which you're already doing. What about like a Valentine's Day party, or a Christmas party, or?
Well, I said, you can come in tomorrow and, and sign in, and then Valentine's party, come in and say, hey, I'm Travis, here it is.
But what about, I guess Halloween's where the first party.
I think we make a exception.
I mean, is that?
In, in my experience, when we had things like Halloween parties, we would do a paper sign-in for those days with name back, with, with regular tags, just because the volume of people, we want people to get back into the kids' classrooms.
Yeah, the last person alive, it's, by the time they get through the party, they're all.
Things like that, you know?
Okay, we can get that additional information that you all want.
Raptor Technologies. You know, we get emails from, I've got 10 emails from Raptor Technologies.
Because again, we bought that stuff last March.
Yeah, I got 10 emails from Raptor Technologies in July.
That's interesting.
They're actually wanting us to buy more, they offer so many other things.
Of course they do, so we're members.
We bought what they, what they offer.
Okay.
Is there like a monthly or yearly fee to go with it?
Yearly fee. Well, if you use all of that stuff. You know, if you just use it as a program, the name tag maker, you don't have a fee for that.
Does name tag maker only qualify for level two?
Actually, unfortunately, I think to answer yes.
I'm just asking.
I'm just saying, I disagree with that, because I think that the desk that qualifies, check-in. Because visitor management right now just says any type of visitor management. And with identify, identified visitor management. It was $14,000 or whatever that, again, we got for free for that. No money out of it. But I know last time you had a question about how hard it was to check in.
Yeah, I know, we discussed that, it's really a. Well, I think she mentioned on party days.
Yeah.
Instead of checking to get out for. Dennis deployment, you're waiting to get there anyway.
To be honest, most of the times we started, you know, you know your parents, and so we would like have their name pulled up before they even made it to the desk, because we were checking them in. Because you know your people who come in to volunteer a lot, or your parents who come in to eat with their kids a lot. And so you, you, we would just check them in, and then it just became a tracking service. And we were able to track volunteer hours and celebrate our volunteers that way, because then they could check in, and then they would check out, and then we could, we knew exactly how much time they were spending in the building, and we could celebrate that for them. And then we also used it to check in students for tardies, and so it became a student tardy pass system. So we would check in a student, and then we would give them a pass that they could give to their teacher, so that they knew that they had come through the office, and that we knew that they were there. And they didn't need to call the office anymore to let, you know, to make sure there wasn't any confusion. So there were a lot of reasons for, that we, a lot of things we used it for.
I got lost on where we're at. So are we waiting on a list of bad guys and good guys? Like the, the threshold?
I made a motion not to use it until we, or share, we're on fun phase two. But nobody seconded it.
What's the disadvantage to knowing that there's a felony?
I think it has a chilling effect on parents. I think it has parents that may have had old felonies, felonies that are not safety issues. Like it embarrasses them, I think it makes them not want to come to school. And I think parent involvement and student education is paramount.
Do we agree there's some folks we don't want in the school? Or, or you're saying you don't want to know any of them?
Hell, I agree there's some people we don't want in the school. But we've got, we've got SROs, we've got involved administration, we've got involved teachers. So I think that the, I think the con is that way the benefit is.
If there was a plan for what level, does that suffice?
You could talk me into it, I think if we had an objective criteria that didn't just flag any felony in your whole damn life.
Yeah, okay.
It also is going to keep us from getting sued when we keep one felon that had a nine-year-old drug felony out and allowed one that had a seven-year-old felony for some, you know, I mean, you just could get into King Woods.
Can you explain, I didn't understand.
Like, it just needs, and everything with that, you just, you know, the public institution, the criteria for what we are objectively, you know, decisions, you know, that it's not just that there's like business who would not come in and this would.
And that's, that's the reason for the, my concern about objective criteria, rather than a case-by-case decision by who you're asking. We're working on that, that's, that's the other key.
Okay. We can work on that, it's not an issue. All right. Any other?
No.
Anything on that?
Okay.
So you're going to revisit that next month?
Sure. We can do that. Pre-K update. Pre-K's full. We've made a lot of progress in the last month. Again, that has been a definite process to navigate with DHS for the last few months. So we have both state-paid seats and tuition seats. They have several attended open house this evening. And so they start Monday. They will start Monday. And a lot of excitement with, with the program. So there is a waiting list, I don't know how many is on the waiting list, on the tuition waiting list. Of course, the primary open houses tonight. And so, and as seats open up, they'll start going down the list of who's available or who.
How many seats do we have?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty total. And of course, the priority was the CCDF, the state-funded, and then with remaining seats, that opened up for tuition. seats, that opened up for tuition seats.
How many of those?
Right now, I think it's, breaks down to twenty-five state-paid and fifteen tuition, at least right now, unless there's some, a couple of changes, but I think that's pretty solid right now, so.
Is it the, sorry, come ahead. Is it the same hours as like K through two, or is it, I don't know if there's any reason to have them start early or just for the drop-off pickup?
They do leave a little bit here.
Yeah.
You just have to schedule it, it runs the same hours as a school day, and it's, they're, just like we do dismiss, schools are a little staggered.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And the difference is, with pre-K, they must bring them in, sign them in, they must come sign them out. That is part of the program that our state early childhood wants young parents to have interactions with that teacher before they hit kindergarten. That's part of the, the process with pre-K. So, that, that'll be a little different on arrival and dismissal.
That's kind of more what I was thinking, is if they, just to, not that you kick a four-year-old up and don't worry, say, walk up to the school and all that, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Right.
That helps me there.
Right, right.
Just hope they get.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say, I'll clean to see the facility tonight at open house, and it's a really nice facility, so. And my understanding is, our folks did most of the remodel right, and it looks really nice, so. Now, the area where state speech was, that was the pod that was.
The pictures you sent were really nice.
Yeah, just those couple. So, that's gonna work out.
Best part, you go in the, in the bathroom, and you see the little tiny toilets.
They are tiny. Teachers call them squatty potties.
Well, thank you, I know Dr. Duffy, when you came here, you know, I think establishing pre-K was a priority of the board at that time, and I think we're just all appreciative of all the effort that's gone into making this happen.
Hey, there was a lot of people that contributed to the cause, and, and who knows, you know, if the waiting list grows, and who knows how quickly we could expand it in the future. So, we'll see, we'll see, but.
The more kids we can get in, the better.
But it's.
Yeah, it'll have a huge impact.
Yeah, we'll notice the difference in kindergarten, so. Okay, that's on pre-K, and enrollment as of ten forty-five, that's.
I'd like that additional note there.
Yes, I already know there's more kindergartners, so this, this change is hourly, but, so, I'm sure I'll get it up there tomorrow, but three thousand forty-four as of that time this morning.
Where do you expect, I mean, these numbers are usually low, for, we will have a week of people continuing to register, where were we this, you know, week before start last year?
Well, we ended last year at three thousand fifty-three.
Right, but the week before school last year, do you know where we were at?
Oh, gosh, I'd have to get on my computer and look it up, but, again, we were, we were, we, we ended third quarter, I do know this number, we ended third quarter thirty-one nineteen for funding for, for that year. So, I would say it was thirty-one hundred-ish, thirty-one fifty-ish, as far as starting at that time, is my guess on that. So, more to come on enrollment. Also, to let you know, legal transfers as far as approvals, we have ten outgoing and eighteen incoming for, for kind of this last thirty days or so there. Let's see, just a comment, you received the, the annual, basically the student discipline report, that is a report on prior, just a little summary of bullying, and that was the, the data that was found, and for each school, some had some, some did not, as far as what met the state definition, and that'll be an annual thing. I did it, I think, in June last time, so I'll have to remember to do that in June next time, but it's just an annual requirement, y'all receive that.
Are those records maintained at the building level, or is it probably?
They are, those records are in e-school. So, even though you may have written referrals, if everything's input, am I right, Mr. Reeves? In e-school, all the discipline data, and, and so, I get them to do the more specifics, you know, again, they're very generic, we can't talk about the confidential information here, but that's where it's pulled, so that is what was found in e-school.
Thank you.
So, anyway. Okay, next one, I did send information on this to you earlier, cell phones on campus. There's initiative, we received a letter from the governor, oh, about a month ago, on initiative that the state really wants to endorse of cellphone-free schools. And we were asked on a fairly short timeline whether we wanted to opt-in or not. So, of course, I haven't really heard of any major issues we've had here in the district, so I consulted Mr. Kirkendall, Mr. Corsi, before saying we wanted to opt-in to this pilot. So, after talking with them, I decided not to opt-in right now, and I'll let, I've sent you comments Mr. Corsi had since he's at open house, but based on my discussions with, with them and Dr. Wood, I come to conclusion that at least the system we're using works for us. And Mr. Kirkendall, you wanna make some comments on what we talked about with cell phones, students?
You know, it's one of the biggest, I was telling Dr. Duffy, I think that the number one way we looked at this as far as making that decision was the fact that we, we wanna prepare our students to be young adults, and young adults use cell phones. And so, if you have so much restriction whether or not you use them, they don't know how to use them appropriately. Our cellphone issues are really few and far between, and a lot of it doesn't even have to do with school at all, and stuff that they put on social media, that whether they have a phone on them or not. We have so many, you know, eighty-five to eighty-six percent of our students involved in some club or activity or athletics, they're, they have their phones on, that's how our coaches and, you guys have kids, that's how they communicate, that's how ag communicates. They use them. And is there inappropriate use? Sure. Is there, does it cause a restrict, you know, is it restricting their learning? I don't think so. I'm almost as opposed to that as what you were about, when you mentioned about the Raptor. I may change my mind at some point, but right now, I, I think the way we're doing it, our, our teachers have the autonomy to kind of restrict and/or allow cellphone usage the way they see fit, and we just don't have, we don't have issues where I feel like that's necessary. I know there are some schools that, that do have that, we don't, and I hope that we don't, I don't think we will.
So, I know you told me between classes that y'all send reminders through Thrill Share a lot.
We do, so you.
Third period, we're doing this, don't forget to bring this.
You have to take a, you know, take a pick, I mean, we, we have a lot, many fewer announcements over the intercom than we used to, because we have electronic media to use. So, if you, I think if you use it wisely, it's very beneficial.
Yeah, so, more to come on that, just wanted you to know where we are. I know many schools did opt-in, and we'll just kind of watch and see how that develops. Just because this is out there from the state level, does that mean legislation's coming in the future? Don't know, you know, sometimes that foreshadows that, but we'll just kind of wait and see. But right now, that, that's the direction we're going in, in that. Okay. Legislative update, the only thing I have is Representative Cozart has rolled out, and I was in a meeting with him, with our co-op, is rolling out his funding model, and just to get feedback before he files the bill, he's got some more co-ops to go to in September, and then he'll be done with his tour, just getting feedback, and he really wants to help. He has said for a few years, I wanna fund you for the students you have. And so, he's trying to help. Now, the, the caveats are always in the details. This is modeled after the Tennessee model, where it takes basically a base funding amount, and there's various categories of how many free lunch kids you have, how many English-language learners, how many special education students and certain levels you have, and there's different amounts of funding. When your students achieve, there's some outcomes funding, that if you have so many kids at the proficient or above, you get additional money, and all those types of things, transportation needs, small districts, there's some additional money for what they call small, smaller, and very small, and there's different numbers for that, at least in his, his calculations. The only big caveat I would say on this model is, when those student numbers change, you might be up ten percent one year, the next year you might go down another ten percent or five percent, so there's just some proportions to work out. The model also, he said, there would go toward current year fun, current year enrollment, not the previous year's enrollment. How many times would that be checked? We started a document with all kinds of questions, because he wanted that. You know, if your enrollment goes down during the year, are you gonna be cut funding, or is it gonna be delayed? So, there's just lots of nuances. So, that, his model will morph over the legislative session, and I believe he ran numbers based on fiscal year twenty-three, and all school districts in the state, but about seven got more money. Alma was not a loser in that, but yet that was just for that year. So, anyway, there'll be more to come on that, but just wanted you to know, there will be a new model, we'll just see what it looks like. That's kind of the major legislation that's coming there. Okay. Let's see, last thing, opening of school year, lots of activities, pre-K starts Monday, K-12 for next Wednesday. A couple of things to highlight, Mr. Biggs already talked about the open house for the Two things, we're going to have, and Jen has made the announcement, it's going out tomorrow, we're going to have August twentieth, we're going to have a community reception for Kimberly Dickens, our, our Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And I think that's a first for Alma, I think, to be in the top four. It'll be at the Union, I think, four to five-thirty, which is tentatively planned, a couple of things. But that announcement will go out, and communities invited former past stu, past students, current students, staff, we want people to celebrate Ms. Dickens. And Kenny, you were there, I mean, this was our first day to meet with teachers, and she only had so many slots, so Mr. Kirkendall went. Describe the, the event to them, when all that happened.
I'm glad I was there. I'm glad I was there for Ms. Dickens, she, her, her family was there, she was overcome with, with just emotion, very humble, very deserving, it was, it was great for her, great for Alma. She's, to come this far, and I, and I'm just quoting what, I can't remember if it was Secretary illegal or the governor, but I think it was Secretary Leva, right at just under thirty-seven thousand teachers, and she's one of four. I mean, if you do the math, I mean, it's like point oh 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 five percent of, that's a, that's a, that's a huge accomplishment for her, and she's earned it, so, very proud of her, big win for all of us.
Yeah, it is, it is. So, we're gonna have that event and get publicity out on that as well. The, the last thing I'll mention, share, I think I've shared information to you with you, before the Van Buren football game, August twenty-ninth, there'll be a, I guess I call it a plaque dedication ceremony for the integration plaques, basically the sixtieth anniversary of, of integration of Alma School District. And from what Gary tells me, I believe most of the graduates are coming, along with probably his family members. We'll do a brief thing around five-thirty, around the plaque for pictures and all that, and of course, it'll be hot, and then we're gonna go to the Union for just a short program reception, and then all the honorees will be escorted to the football stadium, there'll be a pre-game recognition of the group as well. So, we're gathering, Gary brought me some things, I think he did some presentations at middle school a few years, several years ago, and he had boards set up, and so, it's neat history, when you look, look at, look at kind of everything that led up to that. But that'll be on August twenty-ninth for that ceremony. And that's all I have.
All right, now we've got new business. First up, recommendation for purchasing property?
This is on page twenty-two, where it starts. This is a parcel that has become available, that is along the block where the school district owns several parcels, and you see basically what's been drawn up, and, you know, this just be another piece of the pie to plan for the future, and as far as the agreement, it's there, potential agreement subject to board approval, and all the descriptions of, of the parcel.
Move to approve.
Second.
So, we got a motion in the second, key discussion? Were we doing all in favor, I just need the minutes to reflect, I'm gonna abstain. Anybody else in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Just gonna close with my company, and so I can get a financial benefit. Next up, recommendations for employment?
Yes, it's on the final page, and a recommendation to hire Ms. Sarah Putman as a special education teacher for Alma High School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second to improve and direct evaluation for employment, any discussion? Gary, none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. And I didn't say for the record the last motion carries, so.